So, I would like to follow me to order. Um, since November 16th, this is the Planning Commission of the Village of Leonard. Seven oh five. Oh, you got seven oh six. Okay, we'll stand for a little final allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And then a little prayer that we will ask for guidance to make good decisions for the Village of Leonard and that everyone will have a good Thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Well, if you want to take my call?
Oh, sure. Uh, Paul Almaranti.
Uh, here.
Sherry Arsenal.
Here.
Debbie McDonald.
Here.
Leslie McKenna.
Here.
And my son.
Okay. Now, first sort of business is to approve the agenda from the May meeting. Do we have a motion?
Maybe the meeting, the meeting minutes?
Uh, meeting minutes. I'm sorry, I say.
Oh, that's okay. Can I just have a minute, Barbara?
Okay.
Not that there's anything wrong.
No, no, there's, there, we covered a lot in that last meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a little long. Let me see if I can find something along with that.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
I was just for our, we have to submit our, we have to submit this to Judy. Did you send a copy to Judy?
No, I didn't. So, did I put one in her mailbox?
Uh, no, it has to be digital because she posted on the webpage.
Oh, okay. So, I'll just send her an email then?
Yes.
Okay.
We have her, those, run her email address.
Um, let me check my contacts. I don't know that I ever send her emails.
Okay. It doesn't get sent to her until after we've approved it, so that's, you know, this was your first time, right?
Yeah.
So... You could send it to me and I could send it to her if you want.
Yes, you know what, I mean, just...
Because I'm gathering the things for end of the year report so that everyone gets their hours.
You know what, I don't have it in my contacts, so do you happen to know it off the top of your head? Or, I mean, I can find it online, it's not a big deal.
I got a question.
Yes.
Um, when they, when you guys were discussing the site plan, okay? It says on page two there about the fourth, fifth paragraph down, "As per zoning requirement 4.20, a fence screened with three sides and gate needs to enclose a dumpster. The dumpster also needs to be serviceable for trash removal. The fence should be of a uniform color with the building. Sam agreed to put up the fence with a gate." Now, that's all fine and good, and then when the condition to make the site plan approved, okay, there's mention that, um, hmm, page three, uh, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, "The waste containers shall be accessible from the onsite loading parking area and shall meet the requirements for shielding per the Leonard zoning ordinance." Now, is shielding the part that addresses the fence being, um, put up and, you know, what Sam agreed to?
He, um, the issue was that there, there was some question whether people could see the trash dumpster from the yellow house on the hill. And we were saying there was some shielding between them and it currently because there's trees and brush.
Right.
But he's supposed to surround it on three sides. Right now, it's, it's inside of a fence, but the gate's never closed and it's visible in other areas, so he's supposed to kind of enclose it on, was it on three sides?
It was on three sides, yeah. Not, it didn't have to be on all of them, that way it was for the...
Accessible, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Well, it was four sides, including the gate.
Okay, three sides and a gate, yeah.
Yeah, if there's a gate, that's a side.
So, okay.
You're right.
So, why wasn't that also mentioned in here as a condition? I was just, I noticed...
Requirements for shielding covers what he says with the fence.
Okay, okay.
The fence is the shielding, so I think it's probably okay as it is.
But, but, no, that's abandoned because they didn't even work on it.
No, I think he's abandoning it.
Yeah.
Because it's too much trouble, but...
Well, it might be the time of year or two. And I mean, he might be getting bids and stuff like that, you know?
Maybe.
Who knows what may happen?
It's been several months and he hasn't done anything. Okay, any other questions?
Oh, um...
And when we said the same color, it was just to match the building.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, I'd been here in a while and I was looking at what everybody said and then the conditions and I couldn't see, I could see where everything else was addressed.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I asked what they considered shielding as.
Oh, when, when there's a vote, a motion to approve a site plan, big things like that, um, usually do a roll call.
So, you know, we, you know, we did, I didn't think to include it in the notes, so you're saying, where would I include the roll call vote?
Okay, um...
You could have put it right there.
Put it, yeah.
Was that page two?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, because I have it in my handbook notes that we definitely took a roll call vote on it.
Roll call vote, and then you could do AIF like that?
Okay.
Like that?
What, what you did was, is, I don't know if that actually legal is to motion to approve the plan, doesn't matter, like, second. Um, just, I have a, I think it was Commissioner Almaranti, comma, yes, Commissioner McDonald, comma, no.
Okay.
You know, just, yeah, do it that way. Don't, don't do the all in favor. And then at the end, you can vote for it after, not...
Unless it was all. Okay, and then I've seen other ones written out where they've put, you know, so-and-so, you know, all the names of the people who attended at the top of the minutes, and then they'll put how many yeses and how many noes. Is that another, is that acceptable?
I don't know, our village attorney seemed to like...
Did you know how each person voted as opposed to just putting, you know...
Well, he, he thought it was a good way to, to write it down.
I can give you, I can give you the last meeting of the village council and show you the example.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, that will just...
If you're copying what was done in the village council, it should be.
Okay, so, uh...
So, I will get that to you.
Thanks.
So, that's something I have to do, okay? Anything else?
Oh, when you signed your name, you can write, "Respectfully submitted..."
Under me, you go, "No."
Um, and I'm the, I'm the recording secretary, because that's, that's what you're, what you're getting paid for, you're getting paid a little bit more.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I don't know, you could...
Okay, sure. No, this is all good input, I appreciate, you know, this is my first time doing it, so really, I was hoping everybody would take a look at it and, you know...
Well, I can, I guess there's a wrong way of doing it, I, I just know, oh, and then the members absent, you would put that member's name on there.
Oh.
That's really like the, the correct way to do it, because this, after we approved this, this becomes a, excuse me, a legal document, uh, one that's just in the board.
Oh, yeah, okay. I hadn't thought about that. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, well, yeah, I didn't, I never thought about it either, so...
Okay, okay.
Our village attorney came to one of the meetings and he, he said a lot of my son about the way I did the minutes and he just gave me some papers, added to it, but...
Great.
Nothing I gave chance.
So...
Because I was doing pretty good.
Can we approve the agenda with amendments?
No, you just...
Oh, the, the minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, a motion that we approve the meeting minutes with the changes, um...
Oh, what, what was changed?
Uh, the change, the changes to include the voting on the site plan.
Oh, I, no, I, oh, okay, if you want to do that over, yeah, because it does become a legal document, yeah, I guess that's a good idea, just to do that one part over.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem.
Okay, okay.
Piece of cake. Okay, I can second your motion.
You go, um, all in favor, say yea.
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 And then what was it?
All opposed.
All, yeah, we both gave nay. So, how, I can't remember how I said it.
Okay.
Yea is yes, nay is no.
Okay, any yays?
Yeah.
And then any noes?
For this, it would just be...
Okay.
On some, anything to do with the money.
Agenda?
Yes.
All opposed.
Yeah, this is just...
Go ahead.
The agenda and the minutes from last...
We didn't do it.
Oh, we didn't do it, okay.
So, I mistakenly set agenda and made plot minutes, so go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You seconded?
I, I made the motion, she seconded.
Okay.
Then all opposed.
Did, did you?
Okay.
None taken, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on, we have any audience business? We have one audience member.
Yeah, it'd be me.
And would you, could you give us your name?
Yeah, I'm Jay Rathberg.
R-A-T-H-B-E-R-G?
B-U-R-G.
B.
It used to be S-B-U-R-G.
Gotcha.
Am I on?
You're on.
I'm going to need this one, that way I can be on this too.
Okay.
Uh, I've been here since '72. We bought a house on the face of streets, well, I didn't have a, still had an old house, so we, we got ourselves a septic field, and put that in. And, uh, I taught school in Lakewood for 40 years, pretty, I have a driver's ed, I have a DAX, yep. And, uh, you know, I've been here and I see things that, not, not much changes, and my current concern here has been in the past few years with funding going away, can we keep this village going? What can we do to make it be better? People complain about the buildings that are not open, they don't understand that without sewers you can't do building swatting in this town, that it must take place. If it doesn't, I've been studying this stuff, and I do study before I say things. If, if you want to, you can Google Smith's Creek Sewer System, it's just east of here. They were forced to put sewers in, whether they liked it or not, and they, it didn't matter what it cost, the Michigan Supreme Court said they were putting sewers in, because the east side of the road of the creek was polluting the creek. Now, the west side was not, so the east side had to pay for the sewer connection. Now, I did the math, it was a half, it was a one, one, about a one and a half million dollar, well, no, it wasn't that much. It was 1.17 million dollar project, which basically involved four miles of pipe to 29 properties, and it cost $341,000 for the taxpayers had to pay this.
What year was that?
This was in 2016.
And where is Smith's Creek exactly?
Marysville, you know where Marysville is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's this way.
So, it's, it's not, it's not in Oakland County?
No, it's not in Oakland County. Um, so in 2013, the Michigan Supreme Court said they will build sewer, a sewer system regardless of the cost. So, I took the 341,000, divided it by 29 properties, and I got $11,758 that each property owner had to pay. Now, that's over a 40-year period, that's how long the loan is, so that's $294 per year, divide that by 12 months, and we got $24.49 that they had to pay to get sewers in there to take care of this pollution. I think Leonard should seriously be considering this, it's, we, we were told 12 years ago that we needed to get sewers and we needed to get them done within seven to 10 years. We did not do that.
Who told?
That was the sanitarian from Oakland County, it covers Addison Township, Mike Pilor. He came through and ditested the town, found the pollution, I'm not going to get into where it was, but I don't know if it was all that significant, I didn't study it deeply.
Do you know if Mike submitted a report?
Hmm?
When Mike did the di test, did he submit the report?
Yeah, there are some documents that show where the pollution is coming into catch pace.
Was he working for M.D.R.G. then, or was he working for the Health Department?
He was at the Health Department.
He was at the Health Department? Okay, because he's gone back and forth between the two?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Um, he's, yeah, he's with M.D.R.G. right now. I'd like to see it, I think that would be...
Uh, I'm sure it's at an office, Judy can get you that, I'll pass it to you. Oh, here's something cool that I found. If anybody's interested, I found an obituary of Frank Rala, original.
Oh, okay.
Pretty cool.
So, your concern then is...
I'm getting to it here. I'm getting there. Do you need it, do you have some time or not?
A little bit.
Okay. I got, I got some things I want to pass out. You got to decide if you want to get sewers, and if you don't want to get sewers, then there are solutions to giving us some income to help pay for storm drains that break. We just spent $20,000 that we don't have to fix a minor part of the storm drain. We can't keep doing that or we'll be out of business.
I, I, I think that this should be addressed to the village council, not to the planning commission.
Well, I'm bringing it, this, this stuff should come to the planning commission.
But not, not the first time, it should go to the village council, we don't have anything to do with sewers.
All right, that's just a minor part of what I want to talk about here. You'll pass those out.
Oh.
Well, we'll listen to what you're doing and then we'll, you may pass this information that you may have to present it to the village council again.
Well, that's not a problem. Okay, I, so I, I, I did a breakdown of where we could, I would consult this without sewers, and...
Do you want to share, so Debbie here?
She's got one, yeah.
I pulled up the, I had Paul gave me the Oakland County Soil Survey map years ago, and I went through that, and I found out what soils will work for septic fields in this town and the county would be happy with it. So, we got maps that show the kind of soils that are acceptable to the county. This first one tells you what's an optimum soil and what is acceptable soil, both of these soils are acceptable by the county. So, when you're doing your planning and you're doing your zoning, you may want to zone some things that pay taxes better than residential is probably lower on the list of taxpayers, your industrial and your, your commercial pay a higher tax. So, you might want to consider, if we're not going to get sewers, then we have to go another route and try to get some income coming in here. So, what I've done is shown a map, this is the Soil Survey map of Oakland County, it was made by the Department of Ag, this is a 1980 edition, or '82 or '84, it doesn't matter, soil doesn't change that much. This will show you the soils, there's only three soils in Leonard that are acceptable on this map I'm going to give you, and that is number 13, 18, 44, and 47, that's it, that's the only soils that Oakland County Health Department will accept for anything in this town. So, what I've done is I, I went a little further and I explained where there are some potential spots for industrial and commercial. This one is actually for, well, let me back up to this one. This one's going to show you where all the sand, acceptable soil, and water is, this is where it is except for Rosie Drive because it's too late, it's already, it's already there, but there's quite a bit of sand on that, that property. So, what I'm showing you here is the pink areas are sand, acceptable soil that, that have houses on it. The green one, those are vacant properties that the Health Department will accept. And then we have the commercial building that is in blue, that's acceptable sand by the county. These are areas that I think, since it's on the main drag and every other town does it, even the ones that have sewers, they put, they put their commercial on, on the main road, and I think that's where we probably should consider placing this. You can, you can place a proposed zoning on any piece of property you want, doesn't mean it's going to happen, but the planning commission should be doing that. Do you hear the message? Sure.
So, your, your proposal so far is, is to place sewers along...
No, if, if we don't get sewers, I'm, I'm assuming we aren't, so this is what I'm doing tonight, is showing you where the soils are that the, that the Health Department will accept.
Except for what?
Except for commercial or industrial use, or even a house.
Though, except for what, though? You're not clarifying what, what you're saying, except for what, for what purpose?
There's soils that the county will not accept you to build any septic on.
You mean it won't work? That's what you're saying? You can do an engineered system?
Well, some of you, you can't, no, no. I'm showing you the ones that, that very first one that I gave you, it shows you the acceptable soils by the Oakland County Health Department that they will accept, others they don't have to.
When you, when you list a vacant property, just because it's vacant doesn't mean it isn't owned.
I didn't say it wasn't. You, you should be planning for where you would, when, when you plan things, you should be planning where you want this particular zoning to be.
Well, the zoning is already zoned the way it's zoned.
But it can be zoned another way, too. You, you can propose what the future zoning should be.
Right, only if we had this plan in place to get septic. Do you know how far away the main ends?
Yeah, 32 mile road.
That's, that's like six miles away.
Mm-hmm.
You know, do you realize how much it would cost to bring that six miles?
Would you like me to do the study? I will. I've already done, I already talked through this series, we told you what I'm talking about.
So, to wrap this up, because this wasn't on our agenda and we don't have quite enough time.
I'm actually done after this one.
Okay.
Okay, these are the acceptable soils by name and where they're located. I have listed where I think industrial would fit very well across from the fire department. There's a 20-acre piece of sand there that I can't believe that industrial group would not want that, at the low taxes that this village has, and we're 15 minutes from an international highway. I don't believe if we pursued it, we couldn't get somebody to don't pay our taxes and use that land for that purpose. Then, Mike Pilor 12 years ago said we should buy this piece of property this per se, right behind the fire department. Now, here's the neat thing, if we buy it...
You mean 009? No, 006, our department is...
Well, I didn't, I didn't even put that, that on that sheet, that's coming on this sheet now. I was just talking about commercial on Rochester Road with that map. This one's coming with where we would possibly put industrial, and this one should be very significant and important to do, because Mr. Pilor told us 12 years ago, we should buy this piece of property behind the fire department that is for sale and put our village septic system there. I think it's going to be cheaper than going to 32 mile road by far. Now, I've got another suggestion that I think we can also do a mess on the park property, put in a little sewage treatment plant, so we don't have to run piping all over the town. Put a little sewage treatment plant, run the, the processed water into the swamp that's on the property and let it go down a storm drain. Detroit does it every day, they run it into the Detroit River. I don't know why we, we can't do that. So, I think what the planning commission should be doing is studying possibilities of saving this town before all of a sudden we end up in court, in the Michigan Supreme Court, and being forced to do it. This is the time to start preparing for sewers, but in the meantime, get some commercial property on Rochester Road, get an industrial site someplace where there's sand... Road. Get an industrial site someplace where there's sand. You've seen Cooper Standard. They've got this massive septic field in their backyard. That's what they have to do to stay there. How long will that last? Where are they going to put the second septic when that one fails? Is there room? I don't know.
They may have to re-engineer it at that point. This is some welcome input and we'll bring it up with passing the information on to the village council and...
Well, you're the planner, so you should be planning these things.
We don't take direction.
What?
As a planning commission, we take our direction from the village council and not from the citizens.
Oh, I'm just making suggestions. I'm not telling you to do anything.
That's what you saw.
Well, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, I'm accepting your suggestions and we'll pass it along and...
That's all I want.
I think it's food for thought and I appreciate the fact that...
It is. I mean, I realize that there are problems in the village with the septic and sewer and the water drainage and the moist land.
Right. I appreciate the fact that he looked at options and solutions as opposed to just coming in complaining.
Right.
You know, that there's, you know, just looking at other things that we can do.
Right.
Well, I just want to mention that there is some talk going around of dissolving the village and I hate to see that happen if we don't have to. I know darn well that Bruce Pearson will bring that sewer up here whether we do or not.
Well, they don't have the sewer yet to his area.
No, no. This is in the planning stage. That's what we should be doing is getting ready for this stuff. Well, I haven't heard anything about it. Okay. Well, I have. All right. That's all I got.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you.
Right here.
Okay. Moving along. The update from the village council meeting in regards to planning commission. We've, they've ratified, in the process of finishing up the ordinance master codes, we are required to have a public meeting for the ordinance 19, private road amendment. And we are proposing to have that meeting in December. So it's December 21st. Mike was recommending, it was our choice to try and get it scheduled for December 21st. I realize it's real close to Christmas, but it should be just a short meeting.
It would only be on the private road, not all of the ordinance?
Just the private road.
Okay.
So if we have to, we could put it off until January, but he was asking us if we would consider December. So I realize it's close to the holidays, but should we like take a little mini vote? We actually, have we had four meetings this year? May, we had one in April, we had one in January, we had one in May, and this is November. We, I think we, I'm available. If everyone else could be available, it's up to you.
I can be available.
Okay. So Sheri's a yes?
Leslie's a yes?
Leslie's a yes.
It's December 21st?
I believe so. Did I got the date wrong? I did bring my calendar. Is it a Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that the third Thursday?
That can be there.
I mean, if anyone's...
Debbie's a yes?
I'm a yes.
Okay. Paul?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, at least we'd have a quorum, so we'll keep you in the loop.
And I should be a yes, I said that. All right.
Okay. So we'll, because that requires, you know, everyone to try to be here because it's a public meeting.
Yes.
Right.
It's going to be published in the newspaper as a public notice.
Okay. So, has it done?
No. It will be.
Oh, okay. And it was supposed to be...
Right.
Isn't there a requirement of how long in advance?
I thought there was, too.
There is a requirement, but the requirement would have been okay.
Three weeks.
It was put in tonight, but that was...
Right. I believe it's three weeks. Three weeks.
So they can, you know, help you down.
Does that sound right?
Can somebody verify that? You know, before we...
Oh, yeah. It's been verified.
Yeah. Mike told me today, three weeks.
Okay. So we can do it because we've missed this week for Oxford leader. Next week is, yeah, we've got time then.
Yeah. Judy will have to do it right away.
Yeah.
So, okay. Next. We're trying to, with the master plan, we're trying to make an April deadline to get it enacted. And that requires, there's many steps to get to that part, and that's six months away. But there's like an 83 waiting, 83, somewhere around that 90 day waiting period for the county. And then there's waiting periods for the public notices. So if we can get it ratified today with changes, we would make our April deadline with all the foregoing things that have to be initiated between now and then.
So it's for the private road ordinance?
Correct. So...
Oh, that was private road, not master plan?
Right. Not master plan. I'm just sorry.
I got that wrong.
The private road is for December 21st. The master plan, we have an April deadline.
Okay.
But the public meeting will be before that. We have to get it to the village council. Village council has their time to review it. The county has to review it. Addison Township and all the neighboring communities have to review it.
Yeah. Do you have a public hearing, too?
Right. Right. So...
What was the...
So that's going to be...
That would be April.
April. A deadline on that.
Right. The public hearing would be before then, but that would be when the master plan would be completed. The whole process will be completed.
April, did you hear the...
I think it's the 18th.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
For next year.
Yeah.
On the 3rd.
Yeah.
April 19th.
So that was just a sidebar on transitioning from the private road ordinance to the master plan review and then...
Did I miss number two? Do we have any business?
Um, no.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
No problem. It was just, it probably blew past me. All right.
The only planning commission business would be that I have to put together a budget for how much this is going to cost and an outline of who it all has to go to. And that I'd go over with Mike and I can bring a copy to the December meeting because we're meeting next week to finalize the details on the printing and...
Who's meeting next week?
Just Mike and I about the cost of the book and the procedure to get it ratified.
Oh, the cost of the master plan?
Right. We're going to put together a budget for the master plan.
I see.
Okay. So, next, let's go over what everybody thought and said about the master plan. Any changes, comments? And my first couple, I did, everyone got their copies on different days and I, as you can see, it took a while to print them. But I, since everyone got their copies, I darkened all the maps. I went in and re-went into digital files and enhanced the black, so they're not all black. Mine is the only copy that has it. So when we get to a map page, I can show you. There was a one edit since everyone saw it and one correction to a photo that Paul didn't have. Debbie got, Debbie might have not got it either, but there was the same house was in here twice, so I replaced it. Yeah, I replaced it with the Sotheby house. So, okay. Now, this was, the acetate on the cover would be clear or this would be glossy printed, depending on the cost. This was just some old acetate I had. That's why it's kind of yellow. The binding, I think the binding on this might be cheaper, so I'm going to cross that out and see. This was just a binding that I had. If you guys like that better than this, we'll see how the pages turn and...
I like it, but I thought we were going to put documents together that can be easily, a page can be taken out and...
That could be a consideration when I get the printing. I can find out. Depends on the cost.
Okay. Kind of like the setup of the ordinance 19 or the ordinance book where it's got the page that you can take in and out where it's got like...
The medals, things that come up.
You know what? It's not as, I mean, presentation wise, just because she went to the effort to do this, this looks nice. You know, that, that I don't think looks as professional.
Oh, the cover could still be punched. Yeah, it could be punched that way. I'd probably have to do a...
That is a good idea because I know when we all first got ours, we did have little papers.
Right.
Kind of tucked in and, you know, because it was so long between times. But that's a consideration I hadn't thought about was somewhere where you could open the book up, make supplements where you need to, and close it back up.
Depends on how many copies and the cost. It's, you know, it's an option if...
You probably do it with this. It's just...
It's hard. Yeah.
It's just hard.
It is hard. And nobody would want to, nobody would want to do it.
That's why I did that.
Okay. So who wants to, do we just go page by page with any changes or comments?
Do you want to do that, page by page?
Well, if we could just skip and everybody says, who's, I mean, who's going to know who's got the first page? Sheri's got something on page four IV, right?
Mm-hmm. I've got a couple things for her.
Okay. So...
How do you want to do it?
Well, that's, if, let's just go page by page, real quick.
Yep. Sounds good.
So the resolution of adoption is just the legal document that has to be inserted when we finish.
Okay.
So then we're on I, which is, does anyone have anything on page I?
I just like the way it's set up. That's all.
See how the ink is better, darker? I still, you were gray and I went to black.
Yeah, I still just like the whole setup of it.
Debbie probably has gray. I just want to show her.
Very, very much.
Well, when it comes off, we can go back to the...
Yeah, it looks like you have the same book I have.
See, I decided to go black.
We were in the gray mode.
Oh, I did notice that.
Yeah, I just went black the whole thing.
I like that. I like that.
It's clearer.
Yes.
Yours was the first one and I did a comparison.
I agree.
So yours was also gray and I went black. So that's much better, easier to read.
Yeah.
All the text.
For that, yeah.
Yeah. Everywhere. The whole book. So it's all going to be darker.
Yay.
And Lori's is gray also. See? Okay. So, nothing on page one. I, I'm sorry. I, I, Roman numeral two. Roman numeral three. She's not keeping up. You can find it after.
Well, it's right in the beginning.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I know what was on, what was written. Okay, we're on one. It was on that page.
Which one? Page one?
One. All right.
Oh, I did have something there. I was considering special thanks to Shar Sotheby for her historical research that she provided.
Well, that was what Mike was, he told me. He said he doesn't really want to see any special things to anybody.
Okay. Well, I'll ask him on Monday.
One thing he said was, because I see that you, on one page, you had something about Barb Stafford, courtesy of Barb Stafford.
I have to put those in legally.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I, because he asked.
Right.
Is that, is she going to be credited with the photos from her book? And are they all credited to her?
The ones that I got directly from her.
That's what I thought. So he said it, then you don't have to any of those.
Okay. I've marked that. Continue on. The only thing I'll have to ask him is that both Melissa and Phyllis worked just as much as all of us on this book than, than anyone else. So I will have to say that they...
What makes you say that?
They were here. We went through several...
Because we were working on that.
Four meetings. We worked with them on changing this.
But that's just what happens when people go on and off commissioners. You don't usually thank anyone that's done something that counts. You just don't do it.
Does anyone want to vote on it? I think they should be included. They worked on it. They were part of this process, part of this whole thing.
Well, Mike said...
He wasn't at these meetings. I think we should vote. We're not going to argue. We're just going to vote.
I just, I mean, I told you once before and then he told you and I'm just telling you again.
Well, I sat here and worked with them on this, you know, meeting plan several nights. So I propose a vote on including the thank yous for the people who did work on the master plan. So...
Or would that be in the beginning?
It's on page I. It's the very, the page, the next page. Yes, right there at the bottom. Debbie's saying that we should take out Melissa, Phyllis, and Barb Stafford's names at the bottom.
Not that part where it says special thanks to anybody because nobody really does that with these kind of documents.
I've seen it in examples from other communities that I looked at when I was including this. So it has been done before in other master plans.
Okay. So we're going to take a vote on if the special thanks should stay or go. Debbie, you're voting?
No.
No? Sheri?
Yes. Leslie, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Lori, yes.
So we'll leave that as is. I'll mention it to Mike when we meet on next week. Okay. Roman numeral two. Everything okay on that page?
Yeah. I like the setup. It was really easy to, it was really easy to work this book. I was happy. Much easier than the last one.
Roman numeral three. You folded your page. Comment?
Yeah. On page four, or Roman numeral four, we've got Leonard's Market and then we've got Leonard Hotel. And the description is basically the same for both. You know, it starts originally built in 1900.
Uh-huh.
And what I was suggesting...
Oh, you're right. That is redundant.
What I was suggesting is for Leonard's Market, we start that with Leonard, Leonard's Market was renovated in 2016 period. And then we could put, built in 1900, it was the former location of the Leonard Hotel. So then you're not, you're not rewriting the wheel, you know? And you're, because newly and renovated is kind of redundant, too, you know? So I just, you know, thought it would say Leonard's Market for the title and then it would... and then it would say Leonard's Market was renovated in 2016, and then it would say, built in 1900, and the former location of the Leonard Hotel. That was my suggestion. I don't, you know...
I agree, that is...
I do, that, that is better.
Because then it's not so, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Leonard's Market, so this is where you start.
Obviously, you have the hotel above it, the market.
The hotel is on the right.
What do you mean?
Oh, you mean, switch the text positions?
Yeah, because the market was, the hotel was there first. I don't know, doesn't matter.
Well, I see. Well, she kept it probably in the column because of the sign, Leonard's Market.
Yeah, above.
Oh, okay.
I think the adjustment is gonna fix that situation.
Right.
So it'll...
I'm just wondering if, if we should leave out the built-in twice. Just say Leonard's Market was renovated in 2016, and was the former location of the Leonard Hotel.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. Got it.
I have something to say about page four.
Okay.
Um, there's the house, the blue and white, white house reaching around that corner.
Yes.
And then this photo is, it's the same, it's the same photograph.
Well, it's, I was trying to show the sidewalk street.
Oh.
Like the sidewalk.
I see, I got you.
Like it's a city-town sidewalk.
Yeah.
I don't think many people will notice that that's the same house. It's more the sidewalk.
I see, I see.
Does anyone know whose house that is, and...
The blue one?
They, they just bought it not too long ago.
Oh, okay.
They've really done a lot.
And how about the house on the left?
That's the, Cindy and Dave Row.
Yeah, Cindy and Dave Row own that home.
This one?
The yellow one.
Okay.
Phyllis from Dan Hall.
Phyllis is in the other room.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Phyllis. Oh, this is Phyllis's house?
Yeah.
Oh. I don't have any history on it, so I guess I don't have to call out everyone's houses. It's just kind of a, this is our village.
Paul, I could help to look at it, I offered.
Um, page four, or I guess Roman numeral four, we did.
That's good.
Page one, any comments or corrections?
Um, okay, uh, in the introduction, you do not need apostrophes after this document's primary, you don't need an apostrophe S. It should be just this document's...
Okay, you are, you're correct.
...primary objective is to create a distinct blah blah blah. And then, um, I've got properties in here, by promoting rehabilitation of older deteriorating residents.
There's a quote mark that's kind of off.
And commercial properties, yeah. Instead of commercial uses, and I mean, that's just a matter of opinion.
Can you point over here for me?
Right, right here. Because it's got commercial uses, okay? And what I was suggested, instead of using uses, use properties. But it, it's, you know, six of one, half dozen the other, it's, you know...
Yeah, property sounds better, because you're talking about property. Does anyone have a comment?
Uh-uh. I think it's...
Okay, I can change that.
What, were you gonna change the one before that with quotation marks? I didn't have it.
Apostrophe.
The word documents...
It's not a possession.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't need to be a apostrophe. Okay. I gotta check this. Is it still on page 58? I don't know how many times I check page numbers. Relation zoning map? Yep, it is, okay. All right, I think...
I like the, the street sign.
Isn't that cute?
Is there a double space between width and time here?
This is just like...
Probably not, but I'll check.
Okay, I didn't know if it fits the page, like the program is...
Right, it is, it is some...
Okay, then that's what it is.
Most of them is, but this one seems to be...
Oh, I don't...
Okay.
Just the five left.
How about if we could put in, okay, Elmwood Street, South Side, 1900, and on the top of that, Elmwood Street, North Side, 20, 2000. How do you say that, 2000?
Present. Just say, say present.
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen.
You could say pres, present, but I just, how do we do that with the 2000?
It's awkward, right?
No, it is.
Yeah.
Elmwood Street North.
Twenty seventeen.
I'd say twenty seventeen fits, present won't fit.
Present could be, because this thing lasts another 20 years.
Yeah.
Present anymore, now would it?
Okay, that's a good idea. Page two.
Oh.
I love the picture. I like, really love that picture.
The introduction, that shouldn't be darker.
The whole book is darker.
Oh, that's...
I, I've darkened the whole book, yeah. You had a, oh, ink poor version. Page two. Good?
Yeah, I like that.
Looks good. It's hard to work with the old photos to make them look good.
Yeah, they can only get so much color out of them.
Right, right. Yeah, I played a lot with them, adjusting them.
It gives that old-timey look, it's, it's good.
Okay, no comments on page three?
Nope.
Page four is already set in stone.
Okay.
That came from the county.
Where's the first one?
Yes, I've darkened the map, so you can see.
Oh, perfect. You're perfect, you're all perfect.
That's how they all are.
But we've never had one who looked as perfect.
They were all perfect. They all are originals, are perfect.
Okay, but you don't have to have them like, you can straighten them, you don't, you don't have to have them like...
Uh, they will not be square, for some reason, they are not perfectly square.
That's funny.
So, the left, you want to justify on the maps to the...
I think it would look a lot better, I just, it's, you don't know how they...
Okay, onto page four.
Your version, great.
Yeah.
The version I had was crooked.
Oh, do you want to borrow one again?
Oh, not recent, these are, these gotta be adjusted here.
Okay.
All right.
Within the format?
That's a big change, but I can make it.
I can change on five, I gotta change on four.
It's a big change, but I can do it.
Hmm.
Because I've already, I mean, I'm getting so good at those maps.
Yeah.
I'll have to just cut this and er...
Okay, on page four, in the fine print, directly beneath the map, the second sentence, it is not a legally recorded map or survey, blah 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 blah. Users should consult the information sources mentioned above when questions arise.
And there is no source.
What up with that?
This came from the county of Oakland.
Yeah.
It would say below. Correct it with the word below.
That's fine, I just, you know...
That's funny.
Yeah.
Wow, that was a good catch.
It jumped out at me when I was looking at it, I was reading, and I went, okay, and I was, you know...
Wow.
Right.
Okay, I would have, I just took that map as like, it was submitted by the county.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good catch. Um, page five.
Straighten the map.
All seven maps rotated.
Seven maps left and right.
That's okay.
I hope we're paying you for this, for all the hours you've spent. My God, you have put hundreds of hours into this, Leslie.
The, the maps I was already paid for, so they'll be, have to be revisited.
Okay, yeah.
But that's okay. Um, I've got to keep my hours for the project. So that one's good. And you saw, Debbie, that they're all darker, that I marched that over there for you.
I didn't have to do that. What?
They're all, I wanted to redip them darker.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
Okay.
Great. I see the difference.
It's...
Nice.
Okay, so, page six. Any comments, Debbie?
Okay, first paragraph, Leonard is the variety of lot sizes and settings ranging from, ranging from farmsteads to, the A has to go away.
Yep.
Okay.
Ranging from farmsteads to homes.
First paragraph, page six, first paragraph.
First paragraph.
Five.
To, farmsteads to homes near the Elmwood and Forests.
Yep, very good. And then, um, some suggestions about the pictures, because you're trying to provide examples of these land usage is for each of these.
Mm-hmm.
So what I was wondering is, um, you know, for Elmwood Street, you know, could you put, uh, single family, instead of Elmwood Street, put single family residence on Elmwood?
Single family resident, residential home, Elmwood Street.
Because then it, like, it fits better, you know what I'm saying?
I thought it was pretty apparent, but...
I, I, I know what you're saying, but it's, it's like, then it's not, it doesn't leave any...
Okay, single family residence Elmwood Street.
On Elm, on Elmwood Street.
Depending on how, what fits, I'll, might do a dash.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the one beneath it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, ah, a multifamily residential apartments above Leonard Barber Shop.
Yeah, I think that is okay with...
Are you saying, like, it should be the Leonard Barber Shop, or, or...
I'm not sure about the word apartment.
Yeah, I have a question. We've got it listed as multiple family residential, but here in the statistics, under multiple family, we have nothing.
Uh, do you know what? The picture really is, is there two apartments up there, or is there just one?
Just two.
Is there two? Okay, well, that's what qualifies it.
Okay, it's just not on the statistics.
Should I add it to that? I could.
I don't know, I just, I mean, I don't know if it's being too snicky or what, but...
I could, that's a picture, but I could retake it and, and add it.
Oh.
Because that is accurate. Some multiple family, mm, I don't know, the area acreage and percentage.
Oh, does that, would that apply to something that's above a, a current business? You know what I'm saying? Could that be a, like, just not included?
Pardon me?
Multiple family, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the area and the acreage, I mean, it's above a, I don't know if that changes the statistic of it, I don't know.
Does that, it adds up to 100, and this, this came from, uh, maybe one of them was vacant at the time, didn't, didn't get counted, I don't know. Because this came from Oakland County's source.
Oh, okay, so you're saying this is their statistics, which...
This came from something, yeah.
Okay, all right, so...
Oh, I didn't move it to, wait, what page are you...
She went back to page two.
I was just noticing that there was nothing for multiple family, but then we have an example of multiple family on page six, and so I just said there was just some ambiguity there.
Oh.
So when you, when you'd say, well, here, area parcels, parcels, you know what, it's, it's counted in the, uh...
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yep.
Well, yeah, you're right.
It is.
It's counted in the commercial.
Okay.
I wonder why it's...
Because it's on the commercial, is it not?
No, it's on the multiple family.
Not, not where the apartments are.
Above the...
Above is, it's probably, so, we can look at the map.
Probably should.
It's commercial below, the first floor.
It's commercial.
Right, and that's why it's in commercial.
Right, right. And so, that would be...
Should be, should be single family residential.
Well, it says on here, in addition, it can allow the full utilization of some of the commercial buildings near the intersection of Elmwood Street and Forest Street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
So what do you want to do with that, Lori?
Ignore it.
Ignore it.
Because it's redundant to the point that, that we're splitting hairs, and doesn't, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, it would qualify as commercial, but inasmuch as there's apartments upstairs.
Right, it doesn't, it's just stated, it's enough.
Residential multifamily.
Yeah. All right.
I could just change it to multifamily residential apartments, and take off above Leonard Barber Shop.
Okay.
So multifamily residential apartments, is that okay, or not?
Sure.
Okay, all right, there you go. All right, anything else?
And then the last one, for Cooper Standard, just non-residential land use, you know, what it is, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Can I just do, well, can I just do non-residential, uh, dash Cooper Standard?
But that's, but it says it right there, so why, it's, you're saying it twice.
Well, that's why we're, we were doing it on each one.
Oh, we were, oh, to be consistent throughout, okay, I gotcha.
Non-residential...
Because then nobody has to get...
I'll just do it, okay. All right, I'll do that. Circle these, so I don't miss them. All right, land, oops. Uh, page seven, anything on page seven?
Oh, that house, that's there, on the right side, with the green and with the reddish.
Oh, yeah, that's the twice house?
Yeah.
Yeah, this one's been replaced by a different village house.
Yeah, and, and, this is, oh, cool.
So, yeah.
Okay.
I've replaced it, that wasn't there. I gave, I gave Michael page to give to you, but it probably got lost.
Oh.
It was an insert.
Well, he did, but I didn't, I didn't even notice that.
Right.
So, it's...
Yeah. Okay.
But there, what I wanted to also say was, they're, they're saying, I can't find the by Centennial book, the black and white book, that, got some photos out of that.
Um...
Borrowed it from Shar.
I might have, yeah.
Well, there's a picture of this house.
Uh-huh.
Dr. Roth, who became the official doctor of the village, it was Dr. Hare who built my house, that was his son. So Dr. Hare retired, and his son then took over the practice.
Uh-huh.
He did it out of that house, but there's a black and white photo of that house, and I, I just thought it would be, so we have that black and white photo and a color photo, you know, like juxtaposum, but...
I could replace, let's share his house, isn't it? You might...
No, we're, we're...
She just jumped ahead.
Okay, because I'm, I'm like over here on page seven, and I'm completely lost.
We'll, we'll get to that when we, when we get there. When we get to that page, we're not on that page.
Oh, yeah, 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 I have something to say about Cherry, a picture, Mike did the, or the photo of your...
Okay, so, seven, I have no problem with seven.
Any problem with page seven, that's where we are, page seven.
The second sentence, okay, instead of this classification, it should be the classification. I think, my opinion. I think, my opinion.
I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
Me either. It still flows.
Either way, it's right.
I'm not the grammar, I'm not good with the grammar at least.
Okay. All right, any other things? Let me, I'll go back one. I think I might take out, I'd have to see, the line looks funny there. I guess leave it, just sits tight in here.
Oh, okay, I see.
But I can't do anything with that.
There's more space there.
Okay, page eight. Anything on page eight?
Uh-uh.
Dr. Hare's home, that's the house that looks like yours? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's, Dr. Hare built that house in 1886.
Okay, so change it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Hare's home, see, those people in front are the Montross family.
Uh-huh.
I know, Mike is a little, for our attention, this. See, Dr. Hare's home, Dr. Hare built this home in 1886. Like something like that.
Okay.
And then it'd be up underneath the, or underneath our home, Dr. Hare's home present. Just so you, because you really can't see it, but when you look at it, you can see that it is the same house. That's why my vision was to juxtapose things next to one another, you know, the old and the new, from when I started.
Okay, I can add that liner there, that's fine. Okay.
I don't know who these people are.
Yeah, we don't need to identify them.
Okay.
Oh, I see on that one.
Page nine?
Nine, I could see that you did that for the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, correct. Village look.
Yeah.
Kind of new and old.
Rochester is down 150.
Correct.
Rochester Road is actually one, M150.
M150, yes.
I didn't know that.
Yep.
The sign as you're going to Rochester.
We got the apostrophe for tomorrow, that needs to go away.
Okay.
And apostrophe to on two days.
Okay.
Don't need that.
Okay. Time for a drink? Okay.
Which, what are you doing now?
Got rid of a couple of apostrophes.
So socioeconomic analysis at the top, about six lines, seven, eight lines down, the word today and tomorrow, both of them are apostrophed.
Days' challenges.
Why not?
They don't need it, to not possess them.
No, I need it.
But Cherry's actually right.
Cherry's right?
Cherry's right, that does infer possessive, that it is yours, you know what I mean? Like Bob's toy, you put that apostrophe on it, makes it, it's ownership of it.
Apostrophe, yes.
Right, right. I know, that's a hard concept.
Yeah.
It's like, it's been a long time since I've had, go back to that.
Okay.
My Catholic school education.
There, you know what, isn't that the truth?
Um, we're gonna excuse Paul.
Okay.
He has a prior commitment to you and your family.
Well, it was brought upon me today.
Ah, that's okay.
Your kids, your daughter?
Yeah.
My grandchildren.
Oh, nice, oh, I want to be out of here.
Oh.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for coming, though.
Pardon me?
You and Judy are in charge of them?
Yeah, yeah, for the night.
Oh, okay.
They're little, gotta put them to bed.
You'll be, I'm gonna call you late tomorrow and see what you're doing.
Tomorrow.
Sleeping.
Late.
Oh.
At night, I'm gonna call you and wake you up. Because you get really tired after watching.
The kids, yeah.
Even if they're blood family.
Page 10.
Bye.
Woo-hoo, page 10, all right.
The last sentence, if you read it, it doesn't read right the way it's written, and again, this is my opinion. The growth of Addison Township especially has strong implications. And what I'm suggesting is, the growth of Addison Township has especially strong implications.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so just...
We'll take out the word discussion.
Just transpose them or take them out?
Just swap them out.
Okay. Got it? And then I'll make this more black, if I can. Sometimes it's a picture and sometimes it's text. Okay, page 11. Nothing, yay. Page 12. Mike and I went over all of the tables to make sure the data was correct or as current as we could, available to us. We were given some tables, we made some tables adjustments.
Okay.
So these tables were untouched. Except for, uh, did we do these tables? I think these tables were untouched, they were submitted to us from the Census Bureau.
I like them, I like how they're...
Mm-hmm. We simplified the title.
Okay.
Is there, um, see how the key is Census, 2010, and then Simcog, and in mine I got greenies.
Yeah, you got a bad printout, sorry. I ran out of ink there.
Fine.
Gotcha.
No problem, I was just wondering what the green is.
Page 13.
Um, the first paragraph, it doesn't read right, and I'm not sure.
I got confused with that one, too.
Yeah, there's, it's, yeah, yeah, really hard. And I don't know what it's trying, okay, let me read it, I just think there's too much going on, we need some separation.
I agree. Yeah, it's like somewhat faster than the county average, the county what?
Well, it's all those statistics that are thrown in there. And the, um, there's the 61.27% of the county median to, and then it lists the dollar amount for which would be wages, you know, income, I'm sorry. And then 65.61 of the county median. So it's like...
I think if you drop the 61.27, it would, I don't think it would take away, I think it would make sense if we said...
Just drop the county statistics?
From 2000 to 2010, the median income fell from 24% to 28, 836.
Period.
For 61% of the county median.
Period.
Right.
Period there.
Yep.
Right, and then, because, I think what makes it convoluted is when you give the 24%, this number, and then you stick the 61, it leaves you hanging a little, right there.
So what do you do with 11,000? I see what they've done, it's like the 28 and the 61 correlates from 11 to 65.
True.
The 24% stands on its own. 24 to 28.
I just don't, you know, it jumped out at me when I was reading that, and it was like, I had read it four times and still couldn't make good sense of it. So I put a question mark by it.
Would the sentence, 24% to that, did, or 61% of the county median? Could you say something like this? Per capita income of Leonard residents is 61.27% of the county median, though substantially less than the county average. It has grown somewhat faster, I think we said county too many times, but we might want to relook at that. From 2000 to 2010, the median income fell 24% to this. Now we have that one up in the first one. Would the sentence flow? Yeah, no, it still doesn't.
So that's the first sentence, faster than the county, the county average or the county median?
That I don't know.
Yeah. Maybe you could just look at restructuring it, we could table it and leave it to your discretion to work that out?
Yeah.
I don't have the brain power to make it work right now.
Yeah, well, Mike and I'll fix this paragraph.
I don't know where it came from.
Right.
If that was from, well, it must have been from some information that was gotten from the last census.
Right.
Right, you know how statistics are.
It looks like it was robbed from somewhere and part of it's missing.
Okay, no one, do you have your old book here and see if it's?
Yeah.
Economic analysis? See if it's anywhere even near what?
Yeah, yeah, how it's worded, because we would have been going back to probably the 80s or the 90s or something like that.
It's probably been reworked already.
Economic analysis, okay. It's, yeah.
Yeah, we just plugged in numbers.
Okay.
So it reads, I'll read it, per capita income of Leonard residents, though substantially less than the county average, has grown somewhat faster than the county. From 1980 to 1987, the median income rose from 6,530 or 61.27% of the county median to 11,295, which is 65.61 of the county median. This was...
Does it say which is?
No, I added that.
Hmm.
So that we add that? It did help, didn't it?
It did.
It kind of gave it a transition.
So right here, after 11,25, say which is? Now this is suspect in the fact that the data's the same in one part, so I'll have to...
Just...
Okay. All right, I'll address that to Mike, because this was, this was stuff we did together with the income charts we had. So, okay. Anything else on that page?
Um, I just...
Oh, villages.
Was wondering if we could take the dates out of these, except for the Strobel Service Station or Sinclair Service Station? Because it's got, you know, distinctive design shows it, their name, okay, Studio 44, you can't see it because of the way their sign is.
Right, their sign's dark, yeah.
Is it Studio or Studios?
It's with an S.
It is, okay. And then, you know, if we just put Strobel Service Station, we could put current day, I don't know.
So you're, the, uh, 2017 dates it or?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if we're gonna continue to use this, you know, if we, if we put a date on it...
Just drop the date, except for the older one.
You know what I'm saying?
Or just put no date on it at all and just leave it, this is distinctive design, this is Studio 44, this is Strobl's?
And...
Or the only one that...
The two bottom ones are comparing.
Okay.
But I could just...
But get rid of the top two, yeah.
Sorry. I'm open to that.
Yeah.
Debbie, do you want to add present day to the gas station in the middle so they're compared? Or just take the date out on the three newer ones?
I would just take the date out.
Okay. Okay. Page 14.
Is there a way, like on this table six, see how 2010 and 1980 and 2010 all run together? With the underline?
Oh, there's a problem here, yes.
Yeah.
This is all misaligned.
Yeah, okay, so like...
It's the 223 goes, they're all like misaligned, like this.
Yeah.
I missed, I missed that, and it, you know what it is? It's one carriage thing, boom, and it would align automatically.
I gotcha.
I missed that. Okay.
Backspace, my dear.
Yeah, well, it's right here. Okay. Well, that's why I needed other eyes to look at it, because I had looked at it so much. Okay. Page 15. I could line that up right there, just because I'm in here anyways. I want to move that in.
Oh, I gotcha.
Okay. Anything on page 16? Debbie has something.
Oh, well, it's just Dr. Robb's...
Yeah, what do you want to say under there?
Dr. Robb's home, built... I don't know, what's the proper verbiage, circa 1880, 1885? What is the middle of that?
Dr. Robb's home, built circa, well, just built 1885?
Okay.
Built in or built? Built in. Okay.
Whatever you put on the other one, you did one other one where it was, it had a date on it.
And then a black and white photo of that house is in...
If it's, if it's available, if I cannot find it.
Well, I have that book, I just have...
I don't think it was in there, because I looked through it.
Yeah, it's in there. It's, it just looks a little different, but it's Frank Rowley's house, home.
It's Frank Rowley's house in the other book?
Pretty sure.
I'll see, I'll try and find it, if I can't, though. Frank Rowley. Okay.
And then the picture at the top, Cherry's home, it's just, it's just not a good angle of her home.
Well, I can't take another picture now because there's no leaves and trees.
It's fine.
I think it's fine, it's kind of an old fashioned house.
Do you have any frontal pictures of it, Cherry?
I did have other shots of it, but I thought I picked the best one.
Yeah, you know, I don't see a problem with it.
How do you get your porch on there?
Well, I think my porch is on another one.
Is it?
Yeah, I, I saw my house in here a few times, so...
If I cropped it? Cropped the edge off, or do you like seeing the green?
Oh, no, I like seeing the green. No, I just wanted to see, just...
Her porch?
Yeah, the front view of the home.
Um, her tree was so full, I tried to get, I tried to get a front view of your house, but the tree was so full. It couldn't, couldn't get through to see her porch. It's like it was...
Oh, yeah, there was, you know, this was the year for overgrowth at Cherry's house.
So if, uh, if I can't find a better shot, that's gotta stay. I'll look for a different angle. Okay, next. Page 17.
Um, last paragraph, into should be one cohesive instead of in space to...
It's one word, okay. Thank you. Maps, yeah, I know, I gotta make the angle fix. Okay, page 19. Oh, I changed all these to black, too, you got black, yeah, sorry about that.
No problem.
And they've moved up a little, as I printed each one, I was like not gonna do like every little thing.
Justify it every single time.
Nobody said anything about the road out here, do you like it, have you been up and down it?
I haven't been down it in the daytime yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to hear that down further. I didn't go the other way yet either.
Yeah, I've gone both ways, but going this way down by the church, I can't believe it's so smooth.
It is.
Nice.
I couldn't ride my bike in front of the church down there. I can't ride my bike on the sidewalk in front of the church or on the road. Do you like the way it's turned?
Oh, I love it. It's much, much nicer.
Nothing on page 19?
Welcome upgrade.
It was a major migraine.
Nothing on the map on page 20? Uh, page 21? I was driving down the road taking pictures, pretty good, huh?
Mm, yeah.
I'll say.
This is Frederick, right here, it's in there.
It is. I figured I'd get something.
I told you to put your house in there.
It's in there.
Yeah, I saw it, back over there.
Oh, it's in there?
Next, one of those pages back earlier.
I wonder, should I crop out that mailbox and make it look nicer or go back one page?
Well, maybe, yeah.
Just crop the mailbox out.
Crop out the mailbox.
Because it's really, it's not adding, I thought, oh, it'll make it look like a, but it really doesn't add anything.
Right.
It takes away.
Yeah, because it would look just like a-
Country road, yeah.
Country road without that mailbox.
I took pictures of, um, Quarter Lane and I tried to, you know, pick which one looked, ended up turning out the best. So, anything on page 22?
Where is this?
It's in front of my house.
Oh, that's in front of your house.
Yes.
That looks nice.
I was trying to, I took many, many sidewalk shots and that one came out the best. And I, one of the days I went out and took beautiful pictures and I realized there's trash cans in the pictures.
Oh, no. What do you think about it?
Right.
That's funny.
It was a beautiful sunny day, trash day. Like dang.
Doggone it.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, page 22.
Uh-huh.
In the first paragraph, "Collector's streets also serve major activity centers and carry traffic of a type or volume unsuited to local streets."
It's a pretty weird sentence.
Traffic of a type? Or I don't know, you know what I mean, it's like one of those things, you said something, but I don't know what you said. Yeah. Traffic, could just be traffic or carry traffic volumes unsuited to local streets?
I'm sorry, what are you looking?
Type of needs to go is what you're saying, right?
I'm thinking if you got rid of type of, right, and you just put carry-
Carry traffic.
Or put carry-
Traffic.
A volume of traffic? I don't know, I'm not, I'm not good at, I just-
Collector's streets also serve major activity centers and carry traffic. I would get rid of of a type and just make it traffic or volume unsuited to local streets.
How about no or, just traffic volume? Get rid of or too.
Yeah.
Activity centers and carry traffic volume unsuited to local streets.
Yes. There you go.
Or traffic volume that is unsuited to, unsuitable to, I don't know.
I would just, yeah, I like carry traffic, volume, unsuited to local streets.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Done. Okay. Page 23.
Is this a run-on sentence, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
"Appointment reservations are required as there are no regular routes and the notice service provides doorstep-to-doorstep pickup and delivery for residents."
Where are you at?
Public transit.
Appointment.
It's like halfway down. "Appointment reservations are required as there are no regular routes and the notice service provides doorstep-
Well, it should be appointments or reservations. You have to make an appointment or you have to make a reservation?
Well, with their-
Okay, so you just say appointments are required?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so we can get rid of reservations?
Appointments are required.
As there are no regular routes and the notice service provides doorstep-to-doorstep pickup and delivery for residents.
Yep.
Yeah, the reservation, yeah, reservations, just getting rid of that.
That reads better.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Page 23.
Sherry has something.
Um, the 1, 2, 3, number 2, get rid of that and. You don't need it.
Which one, oh, here?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't need it.
Okay.
Because you've got, um, a colon there and you're itemized 1, 2, 3, so you don't need that and there.
Does anyone want each of those capitalized or no because they're, it's a continuation of the sentence above?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, that's fine. Page 24. We got a darkened photo courtesy of Village of Leonard, can't see it.
Oh, um, can we get a, a new photograph rolling along since we had all the brickwork done?
Oh, because that one shows the old brick?
Yeah.
I suppose I could do that. I did take new ones, but it wasn't of this nice angle and mine didn't come out as good, but I'll try and go simulate that one. I gotta make sure no cars are there and that's hard to do.
I didn't really even notice it.
If I can, I'll try.
Yeah, I didn't notice it either until the appointment.
Right.
Yeah, just, you know, most people, I don't know.
I could Photoshop the new brick in easier than I could get the photo.
It was a big deal.
Right, it cost us a lot of money and I'll try and do that. Next.
Oh, for the, for the, I know library was right next to it, but, but I, I thought maybe consider Addison Township Public Library underneath that photo? With the bottom, even though its library is next to it.
Uh, yeah, I'll have to crop-
I really don't know what that is. I mean, it's got big books-
I can move up the word fire protection and make this box smaller because I gotta move everything up then.
Oh.
Okay. So Addison Township Library?
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah. I mean, it's next to the word library, but, you know.
If you just move up that bottom photo, thank you, a little bit.
Not enough, but I'll, I'll get it to fit. I, I have enough room to mess around.
Okay.
Okay, I can do that.
I have a question, Les.
Yep.
How did we get, see on these, these guys are always at the top?
Right.
And then when we start getting here-
On the certain pages with-
They move down.
Yes, it was a, a style thing. On these, these are different divider pages, it's, the line moves down, so.
Okay. Okay, I was, it's not a big deal, I mean, you know, I was just curious.
It's, yeah, it's, it's-
When I see it here, like it is there, I think of, I guess that's the thing, so, but when you see it here, I think of Addison Township's in the right, top right-hand corner of Oakland County.
Oh, that's cute.
That's what I thought.
I tried to be consistent, it either, if it could go there, it can't go here, it won't look right. I'm just giving her time to read. Page 26.
Reading on the slide.
We're getting there. Nothing on page 26?
Nope, good.
Page 27.
I like that picture of the split rail fence, it looks nice. She took some good pictures, Leslie.
Thank you.
What is this, um, I know it's, uh-
It's the party store next door.
It's, was Mr. Porter's store.
Correct.
And they, they used it as a post-
They did.
Okay.
That's why-
That's why-
It has the word post office in that picture.
I can't see it.
It's, uh, above the little horse, um, sticks, the horse tie, whatever you tie a horse to.
Hitching post.
Right.
I, I was wondering if you could put something underneath?
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, we can.
I don't know when the years were that they used it as a post office.
Don't really need that, you can just say, um, you know, General Store was used as post office.
Yeah. Porter's General Store.
Would that have an apostrophe?
Yes, because it's-
After, between?
V O R T E R apostrophe S.
Okay, Porter's.
General Store and Post Office.
Okay. Got it?
Trying to put Leonard Post Office or is that a given?
The Leonard, Leonard word is right in the picture, right above it.
US Post Office Leonard, Michigan, 1836.
Okay.
But I think that, that would be cool and, and then above it, Leonard Post Office present. I know it says post office and stuff, right? I just wonder, you know, sometimes that doesn't click with people. I just like the juxtaposing of the whole thing. Except I wish my color park there would've waited a day to clean up her laundry. I don't want to hang my, I don't want to hang my laundry up there on the other side.
Okay. Page 27.
Okay, I've got something.
Okay.
Second sentence, "Recreational facilities at the school include a gymnasium, a multipurpose room, a playground, and a baseball field." I was thinking, um, a gymnasium, multipurpose room, playground, and a baseball field.
You can get rid of the A in front of baseball too.
Oh, you, you could, and baseball field, you could just-
So which As am I taking out?
All of them.
Do you want to not have a gymnasium? Do you want it to be, include?
Include gymnasium, multipurpose room, play-
Playground and baseball field.
Playground and baseball field.
Okay.
It used to say, uh, what did he call it? What's another name for a baseball field? It was a real hokey name and we changed it.
Sports field?
No, it was really, oh, yeah, it was really weird and I changed it to baseball field. I forgot what it was.
Multipurpose field?
I don't remember. Okay. Page 28, map. 29. Yes.
Look how pretty the garden looks there.
Yeah.
Hydric soils, not souls. I like that one. Spell check would never catch it.
Right.
Oh, I see that.
They were, it's haunted, didn't you know? Okay.
And on, um, the last sentence, "A community service project in 2016 by an Eagle Scout candidate saw the completion of an observation deck overlooking wetland and pond on the property."
Okay. Very good catches.
Your park looks very nice.
Thank you.
I thank you too for doing the, um, pots as here, they looked outstandingly nice.
Really colorful, very pretty.
I started them and Debbie finished them.
Well, are deer, are deer, is deer friendly out there?
Had their way with it, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know-
That's a given around here, isn't it?
God put that, um, oh, God, English, Irish Springs, Irish Springs soap in the pots and then it keeps the deer from eating the plants.
Wow.
Just put little shavings on it.
Page 30. Yeah, the deer things need to be filled again, the icky things, whatever those-
Oh, you gotta buy new ones.
Yeah.
Or you can't fill those?
Uh-uh.
No.
They're all bent over and moved.
I think they'll deer step on them.
Yeah. Yeah, now they're not juiced up anymore, they're only good for about six, eight months and then they're no more good, you can just throw them away.
Got it. We needed your expertise on that, go ahead.
Okay, page 30, it's just something here, the Pollyant Trail, I wanted to say like expanses or stretches or encompasses about 34.7 miles instead of the Pollyant Trail is about-
How about, it's not about, it either is or, you know what I mean?
Right, I was just thinking, no, it is I was thinking of getting rid of, like, the Pollyant Trail, uh, encompasses about or-
No, because encompasses the surrounding.
Okay, then come up with, you know what I'm saying?
Who's got a good desire?
Let's take out about, take out about. The Pollyant Trail is 34.7 miles.
Okay.
It's not, it either, I mean, if you're gonna say point seven, how do they measure it or do they?
Pollyant Trail stretches-
Okay.
About 34.7 miles.
Either however you want to do it, just something about it just struck me.
Okay. The Pollyant Trail stretches 30.47 miles.
And extends.
Take out the word long.
Yep.
Okay, and extends, got it. Anything else?
Uh-uh, nope.
Did you, probably did, hear about the manager of the trail was-
Yes, I read that. Yes.
You're kidding me?
He was hurt pretty bad.
What happened?
What's her name?
Of the trail, Linda.
Linda.
She just got that job because-
Yeah, she's, yeah.
She's new.
Last year.
This, did this happen as a result of?
It's just a few days ago, she was on the trail.
It's in the, it's in the Oakland Press on the webpage.
What?
It's on the Oakland Press webpage, you can read the article.
Oh, so she got assaulted while she was on the trail?
She was putting up signs that people had been taken away and there was a guy that was on a quad with a trailer and she told him, you're not supposed to be on the trail.
An ATV vehicle?
ATV. He said, well, I'm sick and I didn't want to walk or do this, the, she said, well, you're not supposed to be on it, you're supposed to get off. She started taking pictures of him and he attacked her and knocked her down over the quad and she was on the ground, I think it broke her phone and then he, um, drove over her with the quad.
Oh, my God. Her leg.
It was assault, he hit, he was arraigned this morning.
I'm glad they got him.
Jeez.
My God.
Well, they had the helicopters out, sheriff's car, they were out to get it.
There's cameras here and there, anywhere, anyway, I mean, but-
Linda, she's a little scrappy dog, let me tell you, wouldn't she, I would start crying.
Oh, jeez, that's frightening because-
She went to the hospital, she wouldn't go to the hospital, she stayed there till it was done, then she went off, bro. She, she's scrappy.
Page?
30.
Yeah, anything on?
That was all I had, 30.
31?
I like this page.
Looks good.
Mm-hmm, it does, it's a great page.
Oh, um, okay, the Leonard Crest Mill built in 1884. Do you, do you want to put something underneath it? Is that, that's a rendition, um, the rendition of the Leonard Crest Mill?
Artist rendering?
Well, it's, it's our hope for the future.
Yeah, something like that underneath it. I don't want people to think it looks like that because it kind of, you know, it's extremely realistic.
Well, it looks like Minecraft with people.
You could put, um, artistic rendering of what the mill will look like, um-
Of future.
After renovation.
Yeah, future, after future.
Artist rendering of future mill.
Yes, that's good.
What, what'd you say again?
Artist rendering of future mill?
Yeah.
That's good.
That's good.
How about renovated mill?
Yeah.
Future renovated mill.
You don't need future for you to use renovate.
Okay, the very last sentence on this page, is it me or is there something confusing about it? I think it's a run-on or there's something. Further exploration will lead the recreation enthusiasts to travel about a mile to the west to visit the Lake George Nature Park. And should they wish to travel further, the Addison Township Watershed Preserve is only another mile north of the downtown business district.
They should be two sentences.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's not like you can get there from there.
Okay, so just to fix the run-on.
Further exploration will lead the recreation enthusiasts to the-
Periodizing their powers, George, Lake George Nature Park.
Period, yes.
Um.
And then, periodizing capitalize, ask, should they wish to travel farther. You just take out the word "and".
Okay.
Got nothing for 32.
33.
Has Rand seen any of this yet?
Um, he has submitted parts of it to us, so the answer's yes on that.
Has he seen the picture of the-
No, no.
I can't wait for him to see it. This is almost exactly what I'm envisioning.
Okay, um.
Okay, it's the "us" again. On this one, it was just only, my question was, a portable water supply, a sanitary sewage, do we need that? Or, uh, number five on page 33.
Okay, I can take that off.
Yeah, just, um, provision of off-street parking, portable water supply, and sanitary sewage.
Okay, so two As.
Two As.
Okay.
Yep, and that's it.
34.
Nothing here.
35. 36. 37.
Nope.
38. 39, let's correct the map. 40. 41. Correct the map.
Oh, um, I just, I just noticed that 40, the very first sentence, she, it goes over a space.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can fix that.
And the other side is justified.
Um, that's one paragraph. I could fix that.
And, um, why are these guys hydrate, or underlined?
Uh, because it's the name of an official, uh, document, like a book.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, I know books get underlined.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
41. Oh, that is weird. I got something on 41. The text on number four is too small.
Oh, yeah, I see it now.
Oh, yeah. Baby text.
Okay, 42, fix the map. 43. Oh, there is something on one page that I didn't mark because I took it off on mine. There's a reference to an old 1996 study on one of the pages. Let me fan your book. I think we passed it. I took it off, cause Mike told me to. Um, you don't have to reference old studies that have already been incorporated. I'll look for it as we're going. Okay, page 43. 44. 45. And again, we will, when the village looks at this and gives us their comments, there still could be a chance for us to correct anything that's super glaring.
Okay.
It'd be, uh, not by choice, it'd be like more for, you know, it's in strict bad error form.
No, these are all kind of boring back here.
Right, it's just a lot of, uh, requirements.
Are the semicolons okay in this, in this last sentence? I, um, she read the grammar police or you might know for sure.
She's on page 46.
46, under woodlands, it's the second paragraph, second sentence? I don't know. Specifically common woodland growth protects.
What paragraph?
Under woodlands.
Under woodlands. It's that paragraph right there, second sentence.
Specifically.
Yeah, you don't need, um, specifically woodland growth protects public health through and absorption of air pollutants and contamination and reduction of noise, period.
Well, the purpose for, I'll tell you what-
You don't need to say "and" there, through absorption.
The purpose of a semicolon is, um, is that you can make another sentence. It, it's a list of things that has to do with the beginning of the sentence, but, um, it,
Well, that would be correct as stands on what you're saying, correct?
It can stand, it can stand alone as a sentence itself. That's, that's what semicolons are for.
Okay.
Well, that can't, is a windbreakin' winner, it can't stand alone.
Okay, so a comma.
No, it, you add a few words into it and it becomes a standalone sentence. It's basically, can be a standalone sentence with the ad, adding a-
Does it work as it is, looking at it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Page 47. 48. 49.
Is sewage, sewage is a word?
I had to look that up, it is.
Okay. It sounded kind of-
It's pretty weird, but it is a word.
Good.
I had trouble with it, too.
Yeah, it's just, it's one of those things.
Here's the page, page 50. 1996 revised gets deleted. Cause it's already been adopted and it's all not, oh, it doesn't apply.
I got a question.
So the whole paragraph is going or just?
No, just the words 1996.
Um, the existing grades in physiographic of, I don't know.
What, what page are you?
48.
48.
First sentence. Existing grades in physiographic of the village of Leonard can be retained by discouraging mass grading or extensive filling and land balancing.
I don't know what physiographic means, so I can't take it out or change it.
I, I-
Is that a Rand Bowman thing?
It could be, yeah. This could be from Rand Bowman.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if it shouldn't be in physiographical. The existing grades in, or physiographology of the village of, because it doesn't, it, I mean, physiographic doesn't sound right. It's weird.
It's not a common word. I prefer common words, that everybody can understand.
If it were something like, the existing grades and physiographic land structure of the village of Leonard or something like that, is that what you're looking for? It to describe something as opposed to just being physiographic?
Well, I, I don't, um-
Like it needs a word after it? Physiographic what?
The existing grades in physiographic something.
Something.
Of the village of Leonard can be retained by discouraging mass grading or extensive filling and land balancing.
Why don't we, why don't we replace physiographic with physical, um, attr-
Physiography.
Physiographic.
Physical.
I, I, yeah, I still think, I still don't know what that word really means. Like, I don't know what it's saying.
I don't like that word.
Well, ask for, ask for the definition. It's a physi, physiograph-
It doesn't have any, it doesn't-
The existing grades and physical geography. Let's just replace it.
There you go. There you go.
You know, I don't know why these words even exist.
Well, it's, it's, you know, if you're a-
So the existing grades and physical geography of the village of Leonard can be retained by dis, that's perfect.
Yep.
That's probably makes more sense, too.
Physical geography?
Yeah, physical geography.
Makes more sense, too.
And that's from the front, I shouldn't have turned it.
Okay. Implementation.
All good.
Okay. Page 49 is good. Page 50 has one change. Page 51. 52.
Herbert Road, Orange, is, um, for-
What page?
Oh, I'm sorry, 51. Number four.
Oh, it should be capitalized.
Oh, and then, oh.
All caps.
Oh, that's why it looks so small?
Right.
Okay.
Is that it? Yeah. That's a mistake, okay. That's a formatting, formatting problem. Okay. Okay, nothing on page 52.
Um, I'm thinking you can get rid of these numbers, one, two, three.
Am I at 52?
52.
Um, cause you got the colon, objective, objectives can be achieved.
It's the only reason they added a three.
And then three, objectives can be achieved. So you've got them listed, so why do you need to number them? Cause you've got the colon after achieved. Financial analysis can minimize the impact of-
Well, let's change it to be a period and, and do one period, two period, and three period to make it look nicer. Cause I have room here, I could break that out and make them go one, two, three.
Underneath each other?
Yeah, if you want me to.
Well, you don't really need to do that. You don't need to number them because you're saying three. And if you put three, you know, like after the colon.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Just take out the one, two, three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then you're good.
Okay, that's fine.
I think the same reason it was put in there is because, um, the sentence prior to that, to that end, three objectives can be achieved and I just-
Right.
Numbered.
Right.
And then on the bottom of 52.
Uh-huh.
Um, the village entered into is one word.
Into, okay. Page 53.
First paragraph, last sentence, just a, a question of if the failure should be in there twice or if the sentence works. The failure to support needed bond issues, failure to elect progressive officials, and litigation concerning taxation, special assessments, zoning, and public improvements are some of the results of public misunderstanding of long-range plans. It's just a hard sentence again. I don't know.
What, what about?
Get rid of the one "and" maybe? Failure to support needed bond issues, failure to elect-
Yeah, I would get rid of the "the" at the beginning of the sentence. And just make it start with failure, you know, to support needed bond issues, failure to elect progress, progressive officials, and litigation.
Why not say taxation litigation instead of litigation concerning taxation?
There you go. That helps, too. And I think it's just the, yeah, and if you get rid of the "and" there, the sentence flows more by flipping that around. Taxation concerning litigation, but no "and". Special assessments, zoning, and public improvements, that makes the sentence work. Yep.
So I said, uh, failure to elect progressive officials, taxation litigation, just period.
There you go.
Special assessments, zoning, and, okay.
Yep.
That's a little smoother. 54.
Well, these are definitions?
Yes. 55. These are all definitions of programs that we are either are involved in or eligible to be involved in.
Okay, um, page 55, second paragraph, first sentence.
I would put, um, the parentheses around, uh, sort of a joint custody.
Or a type of joint custody?
Yeah, a type of.
Yeah.
It's more professional.
Okay.
Do you think that they're missing an "age"? Short?
Now, do we need "actually" in there or can it just be "to share"? The act allows two or more units of government to share a given land, get rid of "actually"?
Yep.
All right.
What were you saying, Debbie?
At the end of that first sentence on that page, or on that, in that paragraph, uh, given land area, comma, should it, could it have been short of a joint custody? Not sort of a joint custody, but short?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know what it was before.
Yeah.
I, it, that's kind of weird given that, sort of.
Yeah, we put a type of instead of sort of.
Do you wanna look in here? Um, intergovernmental.
I don't think we have those definitions.
We might. Yeah, it's new. Must be Rand Bowman. Okay. Yeah, it's gotta be type because it says, uh, the sharing may involve public, so it is a type of, not short of. Okay. 56.
What was the type of?
Type, not typo, type of.
Oh.
Instead of sort of, it should be type of.
Joint custody?
Correct.
Okay.
56.
Good.
Um, the first paragraph, I don't know if it's supposed to be two paragraphs that last, um-
Oh, the facilities.
Oh.
It probably should be moved up.
Should be moved up.
Right. Although, you know what? Look at the next one, it has fund recipients. Maybe it was supposed to be spaced there.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why.
And is it a new thought that it needs a new paragraph? I'm trying to see outdoor recreation, does it refer back to?
I'm watching the script.
Yeah, it, it started the same paragraph.
So move it up.
Yeah, it doesn't-
Now, what about this one, then?
It doesn't stand alone either.
So that should be up?
It's a, it's a continue, to me, proposed local government fund recipients must have a recreation plan no more than five years old and approved by the Department of National Resources. Fund recipients have specific obligations following project completion. I mean-
It should be up there, then?
I, I think, I think it could be connected.
Okay, I'll connect those two.
Oh, wait, back on page 55. First, um, first sentence, the first word, public, it's gotta move that over.
Indented, okay. Okay. 57.
When they say that the authority sells tax exempt bonds, who are they referring to?
Well, you can get your- Well, you can get your bonds from different places, so whoever you get your bond from would be the authority?
Oh, okay, so like, it refers back to over here. The authority allows municipalities to borrow funds for their capital and operating needs without going to the expense or trouble of entering the bond market on their own. Okay, I just didn't really know who that was.
Okay. It would be whoever's, um.
They mean like a bank?
Shepherding, yeah, a bank, or, you know, it could be, uh, credit union, it could be some other things.
The mob.
Page fifty-seven.
Oh, good.
Okay. Fifty-eight.
Wow, that's a colorful map.
Um, yeah, this was given to us.
Good color.
And it was crooked, so I'll have to straighten that one.
It's weird.
It is, I mean, that, I don't know what that means, but that's fine. All right? That's it?
We got the table at the back.
The table.
The table, there's, read the bottom of the comments. Read the bottom of linear trail, this needs to be moved over to board linear.
Okay.
Oh, I thought this table was just copied from the other.
It is, but.
I didn't even, like.
It's fine, um, there was a few edits to it.
Okay.
But, um, it was just 'cause we completed some projects or.
Oh, okay, that must change slightly.
Right.
All right.
In the comments section.
We don't have any completed on here, right?
Well, there should be.
Well, I don't know if the park is on here.
So, on here, this thing with the asterisk, complete, is edited, we, this is complete.
Right, right.
Okay, I got it.
There would be, like, number seven.
Okay, let's.
Number seven is the, the Polly and Trail, Grand Trunk Western Road.
Complete. That's the only one. The village entry, village entry signs are, uh, they're not completed, but nobody will, if they flower.
What, page are you on?
Just the first one.
Oh, okay.
Down, down the park, isn't that kind of complete? Lines are all drawn. Village park improvements, I, it's not complete, but there's always, your eyes need to improve. Where's our village square?
Right.
Sidewalk system, I mean, that's.
Some of it's ongoing, yeah.
Does Black Bass Street been lightened?
No, it's.
Fire station.
No, it's, um, these are all, like, future projects.
Oh, I see, but what about thirteen fire station, I don't.
Actually, the comment in thirteen fire station, fire station has been located on Forest Street since two thousand and three, I think, is better than, fire station is located on Forest Street since two thousand and three. Should it be?
Fire station was located. Well, it isn't.
Or has been.
It isn't quite, no, it is located on Forest Street, fire station, no.
Is the, the sentence is fine, then? Okay, just.
Fire station.
It's, it's located there since, since two thousand and three.
Since two thousand and three.
Former sta-
Fire station.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Is on Elmwood Street and now a village facility.
Former station is now village facility.
Um.
Station.
I'm not sure why that one thing was marked completed. The only one that's marked completed is the Polly and Trail.
I would put village park is completed.
No, it isn't, the parking lot's not done.
Oh. The village entry signs. The fire station, that's completed.
You know what, let's take off the word complete there and let the comments stand on their own, 'cause it says complete over there.
Yeah, and this is a project evaluation summary.
Right, right.
Okay, so, it, it, obviously, the Polly and Trail isn't complete either.
Right.
It's, it's in block.
You know? So, yeah, get rid of complete and.
Right.
This is just to keep tabs on the different, um, projects that are identified in the, in the village.
Right.
Yay.
I didn't think we'd get through the whole thing.
We did it.
Neither.
Okay, now, who makes the motion, you or me? I make a motion to, um, approve our review of the master plan with, um, all changes that were noted, completed.
Hold on, hold on. Oh, some other notes, I'm getting my old notes confused, my new notes, hold on, sorry.
Because we've all seen this twice now. Some of us have seen it three times.
And this goes next to the village council for their eyes to be on it.
Right.
And then back to us for a public hearing.
So, that should, um, that should be part of the motion, right? That we approve the existing master plan with the changes.
With the denoted changes.
From our meeting tonight and deliver it to the village council to be reviewed.
According to the mandates.
We, we recommend that it be.
Yeah, let her write it.
Okay, wait, hold on, can you, okay, this is what I have, and please help me if I don't, if I'm not saying it right. Okay, somebody made a motion to approve the master plan with denoted changes and deliver it to the village council?
We're, we're not approving it. That comes after the public hearing, that comes after.
Well, our portion of, so.
To approve making the revisions that we discussed tonight, so.
Right.
So, you're gonna make a motion to approve the revisions of the master plan?
To, to submit the planning commission's new master plan to the village council.
Well, this is supposed to be a final review, right?
Yes, this is the final review.
Updated.
So, we should say that that's what we're doing.
Right.
We are submitting, uh, the master plan with its final review.
Planning commission final review.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Let, let Sherry, let Sherry, let Sherry write it and then we'll tweak it. Go ahead, Sherry. No, no, she, you can, yeah. Go slower.
Okay, so.
So, our purpose is.
Because I've got this.
Submitting it to, our purpose, let's go like an outline first.
Okay.
Our purpose is to submit it to the.
To village council.
Village council.
Okay, that's one.
And, well, we'll go with, we're, because we've done our final review, and you have to have the planning commission word in there somewhere, so we're just gonna go what we want in the sentence and then we'll write the sentence.
Okay, but the first thing should be.
That we reviewed it.
That we've done the review of the master plan.
Okay.
And our final review with changes as noted, noted. Should be given to the village.
Submitted.
Submitted to the village council.
For what?
For their review.
Now, do we need their approval, for their approval? Um, 'cause I already said.
Let's just say.
I said review, like, in every sentence, so I don't want to say review again. So, I've got, master plan has been reviewed, submit to village council for approval, whatever, uh, final review with changes as noted.
So, I make a, I make a motion to. Approve the. Master plan as reviewed.
I'm sorry, my writing is so slow.
No, I'm just trying to think of.
Okay.
Everybody write one.
Yeah.
Okay, here's what I got. Motion made to approve. The changes on the final review of the master plan and respectively, respectfully submit to the village council for their review.
What do you have?
Unless I can make it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the changes to the final master plan submitted, I mean.
Motion made.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final.
Review.
But review's in there twice. Do you want to put version or?
Review the final.
Draft.
Final draft, yes. Motion, I would like to make a motion to approve the changes.
On the final draft.
Changes to the final draft.
Changes to. The final draft.
Of the master plan?
Of the master plan. And respectively submit it to the village council for their review.
Can I just have that?
Yeah.
I don't want to rewrite it again, I've got one whole page of it.
Yeah, ignore my stuff. Okay, motion so nominated.
I, I second the mo-
So, wait, let me.
Wait, wait, wait.
We gotta get back to our, uh.
Roll call vote.
Yeah. This is an important one.
Okay, so you made the motion, Sherry. Second, okay.
Now, we have to do a vote.
Um, oh, do I, do I do the roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Debbie McDonald?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Uh, Paul is not here, Leslie McKenna?
Yes.
And Laurie Zonak, yes. Okay, so.
Good thing we didn't get deadlocked.
If anybody said no, we're gonna have to talk.
Yeah.
So, now, since we're keeping record of, of voting, since Paul left early, I put what?
Quorum.
A quorum means three people.
A majority.
We've got a majority.
We've got a majority, we just.
Right.
We just don't have a, um, Paul.
Absent.
You can just put that he left at eight o'clock.
We think he would say yes.
Yeah.
The lawyers don't like me to think what somebody else was thinking, so can't do that. Okay.
Just say absent.
I, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, 'cause then it's not a yes or a no.
I may make a no, just because he's here, I, I said he left at eight o'clock, just.
I'll put the roll call, you put, um, um, commissioner left at such and such P M.
Okay, yes, good.
Say, say excused, excused at eight P M. Okay, now, uh, do we want to submit the materials to Mr. Rath? Or, uh, I guess I will submit that to the village council for their review.
You know, I mean, you took a lot of time preparing it, or we have to at least share it with them.
Can we close our meeting? Close our meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the way we could handle the, um, thing that Mr. Rathberg brought to light tonight is to, um, suggest to the village council that they.
That there's a concerned citizen.
Yeah, and maybe, um, uh, give, give the village council what he gave us and tell them, um, you know, to contact him for an explanation and maybe make some time at the next village council meeting, invite him to attend.
Okay. I'll pass that along to.
Inside of our air.
The village council.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Okay.
Everybody have a very blessed Thanksgiving.
And our next meeting is December twenty-first.